Please rise. Before we say the pledge, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Reinhardt Pug Strawaway Jr., who died on Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Pug was a lifelong Newton resident who worked for the town for over sixty years. He was also a past member of the Newton Fire Department. The council would like to wish to extend our deepest sympathies and condolences to Pug's family. For those that knew Pug, a celebration of his life will be held Saturday, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, from one to four P M. at the Newton VFW. Thank you. Let me say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, a regular Newton Town Council meeting. Can we take a roll call, please?
Mr. Kuss.
Here.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Diglio.
Here.
Mrs. Teets.
Here.
Mayor LaFleur.
Here. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January third, two thousand and twenty-five. All right, first up, we have approval of the regular meeting minutes from the February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Any additions, corrections, amendments? Corrections were submitted by Councilwoman Diglio, all right? Any other? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve?
I will make the motion to approve the minutes of February ten, two thousand and twenty-five, regular meeting.
Second?
I will second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio, second by Councilwoman Teets. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kuss.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Teets.
Yes.
Mayor LaFleur.
Yes. At this point in the meeting, the Town Council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. The council may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. And when you come to the microphone, please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record.
I just have a question. This evening on your agenda, just to bring you down for this, you have unfinished business on the construction permit agreement. Will the public be allowed to have any comment at that point during the discussions?
Um.
Because we don't know where you're going with that right now.
Well, there is always a second public section part of the meeting. We are going to have a conversation about some of the findings or information that was found over the last two weeks since our last council meeting, but it's a conversation, so. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Good evening. I'm Hazel Coward. This is my husband, Brutus Coward, and we're here tonight because our lawyer asked us to come about the house with twenty Union Place. And he was here to ask, he told us to ask for more time. We put in a loan and we've been waiting to hear from the loan to see if we got the loan and everything. So he told us to ask if we could get more time.
Counsel, I know we received information, but do you have anything further to say to the
Well, while while I clearly sympathize with Ms. Coward and her husband, this has been an ongoing situation for nearly four years. And my understanding in your role and receipt of a two-twenty, twenty-twenty-five memo from the Construction Department indicating a brief history, but nonetheless, I can tell you that construction does not normally get to the point it gets to right now. Expeditiously. Oh, we should have been more expeditiously than we got here, but here we are. I think at this point, it's a council call, but if the council is going to make that call, it better, I would suggest, to be exceedingly short.
Miss Coward, what time do you think you'd like to request?
Let's let's read it from the bank.
Do you have a timeframe or an expectation?
Said it would take us probably about thirty days. You know. Hit the long, sit the long way through or whatever.
I'm sure. So I see that Mr. Bruto is here as well.
Yeah, we'll close public portion and you're ready, and then Joe can weigh in, and then I can give you some advice based on the QPA's advice with the demo.
Okay, so Mr. and Mrs. Coward, thank you for coming. We, after the public portion of the meeting closes, just this brief time, we're going to have some more input from our construction official and the town, the town manager, and and we have a memo in front of us, and so we'll have some continued deliberations at that time. Please stay for that. Anybody else? Public comment at this time? For those in person? Okay, Mr. Russo, do we have anyone on Zoom that wishes to make a public comment at this time?
No raised hands.
All right, so we will close that portion of the meeting.
I would suggest having Joe just comment, and then everything I can give you a possible avenue of delay that we could, but Joe should give you his perspective since he's the one who ordered the demolition.
Okay, Mr. Bruto, thank you very much for joining us this evening. The council is in receipt of your inspection report dated February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, but please feel free to provide some additional context and comment.
Joe can hear us? That's Joe.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Hello, Tom.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Yes, thank you for joining us, and we have received your memo of February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. If you'd like to provide additional context.
Uh, yeah, if you would just give me an overview of what that memo was about, I don't have it in front of me, so I
That was the one regarding the demo for twenty Union. We didn't get to construction permit fees, so right now council laying public comment in regards to the awarding of the demolition bid or possibly giving the homeowner extra time.
Um, yeah, I mean, my, you know, on my on my foot reaction here is that, you know, this the action on the property and the violations have been withstand, you know, standing for a period of over four years. And due to some, you know, events, including COVID, some other issues that have, you know, prevented some of this action from, you know, being pursued, we finally got to the point where we had an architect come in, give an analysis of the building because of the continued deterioration, and it was determined that you know, the the plan was submitted to rebuild it. And it seems that it's a very extensive plan and somewhat costly, so. You know, based on on all of that, I had discussions with the owner. And you know, tried to direct, you know, the owner to towards possibly demolishing the building and maybe seeking some help with the town to rebuild using it as an affordable property, if that's possible, but it just seems that there's no resources financially to do that work. And given the timeframe that we had, and the, you know, the fact that the gas, the water has been terminated, there's no power to the building. We have had continued complaints, questions about its condition from neighboring properties. And it just, it's something that doesn't seem to be getting any better. So my advice was to pursue the action to demolish, and should we get something? In the meantime, once that demolition date is set, if we didn't have anything positive in between, that it was more or less, I can't say fruitless, but the, any attempt to salvage the building or rebuild it, we're going to come up short.
Is there a date yet set for demo?
Yeah, the award is on tonight. The only possible consideration the council can give, I spoke to Sean, is delay this only until the next meeting. But you'd have to give them a date and time certain to provide to the town attorney, certification that financing's in place and they're ready to do the work, and you know, maybe Joe, certification. Because otherwise, we have to do the award at the March tenth meeting.
This is Resolution ninety-one dash twenty-two-five for the council's information. It's under the Consent Agenda, item D. So if we pulled it from the consent agenda and moved it to the March meeting.
First March meeting.
The March tenth meeting.
Could.
We could do that, and that would
Ten days, and that would give them a date certain kind of thing, that that's your only recourse. Otherwise, we have to do the award.
Why do we have to do the award?
Because we went out to bid. Numbers came in within budget. We have the funds. It's a sixty-day window, so we have sixty days to award, and that'll end prior to the second meeting in March. So if you want to carry it to the next meeting, you give them ten days, you know. You can do that. And then, but they don't demonstrate that they can fix them. We have to award March tenth and schedule the demo.
Is there anything precluding us from having a special meeting for this purpose?
You're reading my mind.
You should carry it to a date certain. Should be March tenth. That would be our recommendation.
Well, what are you, what are you proposing a special meeting for? Or to see this, if the, first of all, they've just told you, the earliest they think they can get is thirty days on a bank loan. I don't have to tell you how banks move. This has been going on a while. As Joe has indicated, this has not just happened overnight. The building could fall down on its own in a good wind. How long do people really want to put this off? I understand the desire, there's always a desire, but the question is till when?
Excuse me, if I, if I could just make a comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Um, I, I, you know, respect the 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 comment that, you know, bank loans take, take some time. And, you know, there's a procedure for that, which I, I, I don't have this information in front of me. I'm sitting at my home desk, so I'm a little shorthanded on the exact dates of all of these, but given the, you know, the date that this was, where it was noticed, the termination of all the utilities, that's been you know, well within probably four months' time. And up to this time, the one, the one piece that's missing, in my view, is that you could get a bank loan, but we don't even have any valid estimates for the reconstruction of this. There's been no contact with any contractors, any questions, any documents, proposals for you know, a, a cost on this, so if there's a bank loan involved, is this just, you know, is somebody just going to write an open check, or is there a targeted amount for this construction? That's what are they seeking as far as, you know, financing on this project to feasibly do it?
Mr. and Mrs. Coward, yeah, do you, do you have any estimates? Do you have any plans? Have you solicited contractors? Do you have an architect?
We have an idea with the bank loan.
Please come on up to the microphone, yes.
Yes, we did have, but we just got it with our contract to come over there and give us an estimate, but we won't get the estimated possibility to the end of this week. Right, but, but the process of this getting this house together was my, my wife just got the paperwork, the file of paperwork for the house, you know, like the house wasn't, the house was a uh, the house was left into her as the will of the house, but the, the paperwork wasn't in her name until last week. We just got the paperwork straightened out last week from the lawyers. The deed, we just got the deed screened out, so you know, that's why, that's why we couldn't do anything with that. They get a loan that certified what the town wanted to do.
So, Mr. Coward, in your conversations with your contractor, was the discussion to try to rehab the property given the existing structure, or was it to demolish it and rebuild?
Well, no. Demolish this house, because they said that I don't see that. I've been there with all the contractors, looking at the house, you know, the house, the house had not deteriorated anymore since, you know, we last seen it. But the contractor told me, and the contractor told me, all we do is fix this one wall. I mean, fix the wall. The foundation, the foundation for the house have not shifted. The house has not shifted that, that bit. The beams in there still sturdy. That's what the contractor tells me. The contractor tells me the beams are all sturdy in there. The beams are not shifted in the house at all. So that's why I don't see the process of tearing it down before the house was built back in eighteen, eighteen, eighteen hundred. And the, and the construction of the house is, is not like the house we put up today.
So, um, I believe it's already been discussed, but we're under a bit of a time constraint here. And it's been proposed that perhaps we could move this to our meeting of March tenth, which would buy a little bit more time. But it doesn't sound like, from what Mrs. Coward said, that you're going to hear back from the bank by then, or is there a possibility of a, you know, conditional approval or preapproval?
What we have out here?
Please, yes, come to the microphone. Thank you.
How much are we looking at? How much is the loan they're seeking?
And then, and what, and what is the amount of the loan that you're seeking? Is it enough to?
Well, the amount of the loan we've seen is two, two hundred thousand dollars. And then she wrote it up, or she said she could get back in touch with us and let us know the loan went to, or where else. So I haven't checked my email, see if they sent anything or whatever, you know, but I would check my email and see if it falls like. Which, but when we asked her how long would it take, she said it's possible, maybe thirty days or something, you know, depending on how fast they work.
And that was recently submitted?
Yes. Last week, this week.
Yeah, this week, because
Last week, Friday. But we just got the emails. I just got the email that, all those email that you guys sent. You know, like, what is this? You know, so I got in touch with our lawyer, and he told me to come here tonight. Talk to y'all.
So a thirty-day window, nine days beyond our first March meeting, if we were to propose a special meeting for the same nine days difference. I'm inclined to entertain them the thirty, or to entertain greater than the thirty days that they're requested.
And that's provided that we can align schedules and do a special meeting and give notice, right? So what are you proposing?
Thirty days from the day that they applied. Proceedably, the day that they spoke with the bank would be March thirty-first. If they spoke, applied on Friday, the twenty, the twenty-first, Friday, the twenty-first of March, it would be thirty days, right?
No, March twenty-fourth?
That would be thirty from today, but I'm saying thirty, they, they spoke with the bank when they applied.
On the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, thirty days, which they were quoted, would be Friday, March twenty-first.
That would be March twenty-third.
Yeah, Sunday, March twenty-third.
Which is a Sunday. The problem is, when is the timeframe for the bid unless we get an extinction from the bid?
I was gonna ask that.
Sean says by March twenty-third.
By when, March what?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Our meeting's on the twenty-fourth.
It's pretty close. I say we work it out to give them as much time as possible because, quite honestly, they just got the turnover, and I don't want to see someone's home being taken from them if there is a possibility of saving it.
So is there any way to to put it on the agenda for the twenty-fourth, or that's too late?
That's too late.
Day too late.
That was carried to the tenth and then decided the tenth.
That's right. I think let's carry it to the tenth. Either we're at them, have them come back in, and see if they and then we order aside if there's a special. We would have enough time.
Yeah.
Whatever. I think that's
So, Mr. and Mrs. Coward, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, maybe it'd be a moot point that you're back, and we'd be able to just figure it out then.
So it seems like the consensus of the council is that we are going to carry this to our March tenth meeting and ask you to come back during the public portion and provide an update to the council on what you've heard from the bank, the estimates from the contractor, what the status is, et cetera.
Mayor, if we can get it even before the tenth?
Right, and, and of course, if you have any information prior to the tenth, please be in communication with Mr. Russo's office, the town manager's office. And then on the tenth, unless we have something beforehand, we'll have to make a determination because it sounds like or looks like we're going to be about twenty-four hours beyond what we need to do in terms of outstanding business on this, and the council, it seems like might be inclined to schedule a special meeting in the event that it looks like things are going to be able to be moving, moving forward from the bank's perspective, or the contractor, or any other information that you're able to provide by then. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other conversation from the council that represents that?
I'm going to advise the council, I'm going to, I'm going to speak to Mr. Russo either later today or tomorrow, on some additional information we probably need as well.
Yes, and so council, along with Mr. Bruto and Mr. Russo, the three of you will talk about other information that may be needed from the Cowards prior to the tenth.
Actually, I need from Mr. Bruto.
From Mr. Bruto, okay. All right, thank you. So we'll make that note, Terry, when we get to the consent agenda, that we'll be pulling Resolution ninety-one dash twenty-two-five. Okay, and Mr. Russo, additional town manager reports?
Yeah, I speak to Dr. Piccarillo. Wanted to check council calendars for March twenty-five. If you were available for a joint meeting, the council and Board of Ed, told them I would check this all this evening. I have calendars. I don't have an exact time, so that I cannot provide, but that was the date.
That's a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Is that their regular meeting time, Michelle?
I know. I just updated my calendar last night with all the school board, so their, their regular school meeting is the Tuesday before, on the eighteenth.
Okay, and so this would be our annual joint special meeting between the council and the school board, and the location being proposed?
We'll try to have it here most likely. You can say that. Just checking.
How does that date look for? Council members?
That's no.
I'm okay with it.
Well, I don't want to mess with this, so I'm trying to come at eight, twelve, five, so let me try.
Try another date?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it Tuesday? Is that to agree on that, or is it?
Week to week, right?
Okay, right.
Yeah, all right, I'll go check, Mayor, thank you.
I'll take it up for you.
Then you can't be here. Uh, okay, Mr. Russo, what else?
And then Joe Bruto is going to stick around for the construction permit fee conversation. Thank you for that one.
Okay. Councilmember Kuss?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Councilmember Diglio?
I just want to offer my sincere sympathies to the Strawaway family and gentleman for a very long time. And to remind everybody that the St. Patrick's Day Parade is on March eighth, beginning at eleven o'clock.
Okay, Councilmember Teets?
But nothing at this time, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Dixon?
I also just wanted to offer my thanks to the Strawaway family, that was at this time.
Okay, um, a couple of comments. So thank you, Jessica and Tom, for attending the State Planning Committee's meeting regarding the town's plan endorsement status. From what I understand, we were the first town in the state to undergo their new process for approval and acceptance. The application was approved, is now going to the full planning commission, so that's good news. Deputy Mayor Dixon and I, and really mostly Tom and the team, have been part of ongoing conversations and updates regarding the work at the Newton Hall, Newton Roller Hockey Rink, and we're hopeful that they will be able to have their spring season. There was no planning board meeting in February. On February twentieth, Councilwoman Teets and myself and many staff members attended the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce forty-fifth anniversary dinner. Many of our community partners were there, over two hundred people, it was a full house, so it was good to be part of their forty-fifth anniversary celebration. And then on February nineteenth, I attended the Recreation Commission meeting. Um, so just want to put out there that Newton senior residents are invited to bring their Apple iPhones and any questions they have about their phones to the Community Room at Liberty Towers from three-thirty to four-thirty P M. for three more Tuesdays. So tomorrow, February twenty-fifth, March eleventh, and March twenty-fifth, there will be people on hand to help our seniors who have any questions using, utilizing their Apple iPhone.
Mayor, they are also tomorrow doing Roku.
Oh.
Teaching you how to use
Teaching how to use the Roku.
That was requested, so
Good.
Do that.
Good. I also understand that they might be practicing how to use apps and app technology utilizing the new Newton, ton of Newton app that should be launching soon. So, and other things in the works, the St. Patrick's Day Parade was mentioned. On April twelfth is the town Easter egg hunt. So if everybody can put that on their calendars and are able to make that, that's always a wonderful event. And over the last couple of years, Danielle and Barbara and the Recreation Commission have done just really an excellent job. Not only at the Easter egg hunt up on the field at Newton High School, but also the festivities in the cafeteria afterwards. And then one of the things that the Recreation Commission is floating, one of the ideas they're floating, and I understand this has been something that Mr. Russo has been thinking about as well, is they're thinking about doing a senior Mister and Senior Miz Newton contest to add into our Little Mister, Little Miz, and Miz Newton contest. So more to come on that. I think that's a great idea.
Helen and Greg are not eligible.
I am not eligible yet. Can you please not push my clock any further?
Glad, I'm not lame.
I, yeah. Um. Michelle just had a birthday for me, come on. Um.
Sadly, I'm eligible and he's not.
Um, and then, of course, they have a bunch of other things planned throughout the year, so I look forward to updating everybody on those, on those events as well. And then that's all I have at this time. Uh, so we will move on to unfinished business, and Mr. Bruto, again, thank you for joining us this evening to have a follow-up conversation with, with regards to the construction permit fees. As everyone recalled, the last meeting, we had a conversation with regards to our requests for some of our nonprofit organizations, but specifically the County Historical Commission to waive some of the construction fees. And at the last meeting, we asked Tom and his office to get some more information, and so some of that has been sent to us, but Tom, I'll turn it over to you and Mr. Bruto.
Yeah, so the council had asked for research, which we conducted, and what was provided to you shows that there's, you know, significant number of properties that would be considered state and national registered, so the staff hasn't changed its recommendation about not authorizing waiving of fees because the Pandora's box just got larger. It's beyond the scope of just one property. And all those other properties that have been registered would be eligible for that type of waiving of fees. Joe, I don't know if you wanted to weigh in, I know you had talked about, you know, how the permit fees are calculated and, you know, maybe you could just walk through how that process works in terms of the funds that come to Hardeston and such.
And also, there was a memo from Jessica Caldwell and Associates on dated February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And what Tom was just referring to is the historic places, locations, historic properties that are within the Newton Town Plot Historic District are on the state and national register. So it's all of the properties that are listed in that memo that are in the Newton Town Plot Historic District. Now, that doesn't include our entire historic district, but it is the Newton Plot, and all of those properties that are listed in that. And all of those properties that are listed in that um. Two-page, three-page uh box would then be eligible. Based on where we left off for the conversation of the last meeting, but Mister Budo, please.
Um sure, thank you, um. Yeah, just to clarify um the the. Comments regarding um. How the permits are, how the fees are established, I think that's uh an important um part of this whole equation. Is that um for for a new construction, a new building, the fees are calculated on the volume or the size of the building itself. Um all of this, all of the fees that we have in our fee schedule for Hardeston Township are uniform across the board to each one of the shared services. And that, again, that's by law under the United or the Uniform Construction Code where there's only one construction um fee schedule. That equates to, you know, if you wanna know the numbers. It's basically forty dollars per thousand cubic feet of construction, when it comes to renovation work, that's based on the cost of work. The cost of work is deemed by the state, again, at its usual and customary cost. Where any goods or materials um or labor is being provided at a reduced or at no cost. The cost of work shall be at its normal, usual and customary. Um again, by law, by the the, under the uni- uniform construction code. Those fees are in our fee schedule are thirty five dollars per thousand dollars worth of work. So that's how that fee is established for the building portion of it. Electrical plumbing, all the mechanical portions of it are based on the number of devices, fixtures. Um you know, pertinences that you're installing, so that's how the fee schedule is is based. On top of what our permit fees are, the Department of Community Affairs also taxes this. It's a it's a training fee which goes towards um our licensing renewals. All of our seminars required for licensure um to maintain those. And that training fee is established through the D C A, that's nothing we um that we regulate. And that is basically a dollar ninety per thousand dollars of value of construction. Or thirty seven point thirty seven cents per cubic volume of new construction. So and the fees that we collect on behalf of the D C A as part of our permit fee. Are pretty much passed through, we collect them and then every quarter, there's a payment sent to the D C A. In the quarterly training fee report, which is due, you know, on the um. Orders beginning in March of the of that current year and ending in December. So that's how the fee schedules are arrived at, when it comes to the establishment of. An ordinance or developing an ordinance towards. Um nonprofit entities. Um the guidelines for for that are also found in the Uniform Construction Code. And um basically what it says is that there are fees for addressing nonprofit entities. Those guidelines are, that's a a state, a statute, N J S fifteen A, colon, one dash one. And basically what they're set up for is for nonprofit corporations actively engaged or constructing. Or rehabilitating housing units for occupancy by low or moderate income households. So the the main direction that the U C C looks at. When there's waiving of fees for nonprofit entities, it's for any of those corporations. Who are in the business of rehabilitation for housing. Um also, there are some allowances for persons with disabilities, you know, under the same, the same guidelines. So that, again, that's the the focus of the D C A. Um you know, there there is no standard for an ordinance. For nonprofit organizations across the board, they just direct more towards the um. Housing side of it and those uh with disabilities. And any other questions on the? The um structure of this? If there are any questions, I could take those. If not, then I. I I guess that's all that I have to comment on unless you have a question.
Questions for Mister Budo?
Discussion, let's go.
Okay, what I'm seeing on here is that a lot of these, oh, sorry, these are people's personal homes. Now, do they know that they're on the state and national registers? Because that's like almost sixty locations. And I'm not quite sure if all of these are really on both state and and national. State maybe, I'm not so sure about national because a lot of these are homes.
But it's the plot, so the plot itself, which is inclusive of all the properties are on the national register.
Yeah, they were all thirty years ago or whatever the timeline was, that plot was filed state and national registers, so they're they're all on the registers.
Wow. But half these people don't even know that.
Well, there are a lot of, I mean, the, there's public building, non-residential, a lot of res- non-residential buildings as well because of where the location is. And nonprofit, other nonprofit buildings. Mister Russo, was there any other um?
No, that was the information that was requested, my recommendation, Sam.
And council, you want, did you want to reiterate anything from the last meeting? What's the council's uh position?
Did Mister McCabe have any follow up commentary?
Sure, Mister McCabe, do you have any other comments?
I'm thinking what Joe Budo would say, where the U C C is predominantly focused on nonprofits that are going to be reconstructing or building housing, that's the focus. Doesn't deal with other issues in the community like ours. If you look at our piecework.
Mister McCabe, can you just go to the microphone a little bit? So, no, it doesn't sound like it's on. Is it on? There we go.
Other people have been up here and nobody said anything.
Go ahead.
Okay, here we go. If you look at the Newton Designated Historic District, there are two hundred properties in there. If you look at the National Registered District, there are sixty six properties in there, of the sixty six, I would guess at most about a dozen. Are private homes, the rest are businesses, churches or other buildings, commercial buildings predominantly. Especially on Lower uh Main Street and all across on Spring Street and then up on High. So we're not really looking at a lot of residential unless a a single family, it's basically residential would be up on second or third floor. Where the commercial buildings are, so that really wouldn't count. What we're looking at here rather is something where we're looking to do something that's really exciting for the town. And I'm trying to deal with raising the funds for that, obviously, but. Consider this also, we're talking about a single contract, we're not talking plumbing, electric, anything else on that. We're talking about a roof. A seventy five hundred dollar fee for a roof inspection. If they're there. Seven times at an hour apiece, that works out to seven, that works out to one thousand dollars an hour plus. For inspections, which is a little on the high side. What I'm asking for here is when we're completely renovating this building and rehabilitating it, so that it'll appear as it did back in eighteen thirty. With the addition on the back and using it for an uh for a program for children's museum, that's gonna be very beneficial. And also as a regional resource center for historians. I'm suggesting to you that this is a real magnet for the town of Newton, bringing in more people and also working with the fire museum when it gets up and running. I've spoken to Dan Finkel about this already, where we can jointly promote both of our museums to have people come in. And all I'm suggesting is that. We need help. And as I said last two weeks ago, if it's a matter of paying a proportion of this, fine, we can work out something on that. But to pay out seventy five hundred dollars for this at this point. And I have other work I have to be done immediately because I've got a structural wall issue, as I would think everybody on the council knows.
Having, since you brought those up, there um are a number of other violations um that have been issued that are gonna require work and inspection as well, right?
On that building, yes, on that one, yeah, for the brick, we we were placing a couple bricks that had popped out, that's not an inspection issue, that's just a repair. Rather here, when we're dealing with the structural work, we have a structural engineer who's come up with a design for the work already. So we're going out to bid for that. And yes, that would also require bidding, but that's not the roof, that's not the big seventy five hundred dollar job. We're looking at maybe about a twelve thousand dollar uh bill for doing the work on the wall. So I'm.
But there will be other work that will require inspection, and I don't think, and and Mister McCabe, to be fair, I don't think that anybody is questioning. The good work that the Historic Commission wants to do to make sure that the property is restored and certainly all the future plans for the Children's Museum. And to restore that building back to its previous splendor, I think what the council is having to contemplate at this time is the precedent that it sets. And the potential scope um of the fees that. Uh would be up for loss or debate, and quite frankly, we still have to pay Hardeston by contract, right? So what essentially you and others would be asking the town to do is to um encumber those. Um inspection fees upon the rest of the properties and the taxpayers in the town.
That's why I offered what I did, to they, if there is an actual, ob- obviously, they have to pay their people to go out and do inspections, that's understood. It's like business, so if you want us to cover those fees, we can do that. Because I don't think that would be in excess at all.
That's not how the present fees are determined. And only Joe Budo can decide how many inspections a property may require, so you can't, you can't base Hardeston's fees on. What the property owner thinks is an appropriate amount of inspections, it's up to Joe Budo's.
And Tom's right, that the manager, that the uh. Construction official is the one that makes the call, no doubt, no doubt of that, I'm just dealing, saying that from experience. Of fifty five years in my profession.
Right, but they don't base the fees on how many inspections.
You're right, exactly.
He's basing it on the U C C formula and their fee structure that he referenced, that has nothing, you made the comment of that. Seventy five hundred for seven inspections is a thousand per inspection, that's not how they calculate.
Oh, I know that.
Right, but you said it on the record and I'm just correcting.
I and I, I use that as an example of how long it takes to do a house, a roof inspection.
But it's not just based on, it's what you're saying, it's not just based on that straight calculation, were you gonna say?
Yeah, so the 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 point of discussion is not the amount of the fee, per se, it's the fee in general. The appropriateness of the fee, the appropriateness of the calculation, the appropriateness of the formula is not what is for us to be. Determining or voting on right now, it's whether or not it's reasonable to apply a discount or a waiver. For nonprofits potentially maintaining historic registry status. Given the expanse of property that we have identified, I'm less inclined to entertain the idea than I was previous.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, so the the point that's being determined or or discussed is not the appropriateness of the fee, the cost of the fee. How the fee is determined, what the fee is, it's whether or not it is appropriate to entertain a waiver of fees for nonprofits. Maintaining historic status, potentially maintaining historic status in the town. Given the expanse of the properties on the list that we've identified, I don't know. Or I I I I'm less inclined than I was previously to entertain the idea because it is, it is quite the the. Snowball that we're potentially looking at, because there is a there list of properties. And although today, these properties may be single-family homes. It doesn't preclude them from changing ownership in the future and then being stuck with a position of, or, you know, private, non, private for-profit entities. Changing hands in the future and then really getting out of the control here. I was not anticipating the list to be as large as it was, but it's a large list.
And I uh am pretty sure that the scope of the layout of the district that's been outlined is all. Pretty much mixed use anyways, regardless of how the current status of the property is residential versus commercial. It's so mixed use, other discussion?
As sympathetic as I am to Mister McCabe and what he's trying to accomplish, my stance has not changed. I don't think we can open Pandora's Box because we're not gonna close it, so my stance hasn't changed, right?
Also have redevelopment area that's in this as well.
Yes, there's a redevelopment area included in the in the scope, right? Okay, Sandy or Michelle, I under, I, that's two, it's a no.
Yeah, I I agree with what Matt said, I mean, I I just think that we can't afford to open up that box. And take on that, that liability.
Well, I tend to disagree. Because here you have a a building that's historic that up until they took it over has been falling apart and would have gone to decay. What they're trying to do is restore it and we're in a historic district, that's the purpose, is to try to keep as many historic buildings as possible. Because as we all know, quite a few of them have been torn down in the past, in fact, this particular building is sitting on a historic building that was torn down. And so um along with quite a few, right, on Kennedy that have been torn down. Beautiful old homes that were just taken down, um so where was that rule back then, I'm not sure. But I do know that on Main Street, we had one house that was allowed to be converted over to a multifamily apartment. Where they took the front of the building off and changed the and put the side, the door on the side. People complained about it, but it was allowed to be done, here they're trying to actually restore the building. And I think we should have considered things on a, on a basis of individual basis, not just, oh, they're in the historic district. I think we need to look at things on a history, on an individual basis, based on the purpose and the intention of the building.
So I I I don't think anybody is disagreeing with you, um I, the the issue at hand is the. Cost for the uh construction fees, so let's take your example of the property on Main Street that was converted from a business to residential. And based on Mister Budo's, um what he talked about earlier, they could have come in and asked for a waiver of fees as well. That would be the can of worms that has opened.
But that particular building was not, um they didn't restore a commercial, they didn't restore a building.
Doesn't matter, because it's in the district, I know, but it doesn't matter, because it's in the, I know, but that's a historic commission and planning board, but the point is, it would, they would still.
Was for profit, that was not, that was not a nonprofit, that was a building that was changed for the purpose of apartments for profit. Not to restore an historic building in order to maintain it is historic and use it as a museum. There's a total difference between the two.
Well, again, I just wanna make sure we're talking about the same thing because we're talking about construction fees.
I under, excuse me, uh if I if I could just make a comment, um I believe it's relevant to this discussion. Um first of all, I'd like to to say that our permit fees. Are not inspection fees, they are permit fees, they cover everything from the application to the plan review. To the resubmission of plans um for whatever the the scope of work is. It's all of the administrative, it's all the processing of these things, it's it's everything that's involved in the in the process of construction. It's not an inspection, we don't charge for inspection, and I really take objection to the fact that that comment was made that. You know, we have a permit fee of seventy five hundred dollars and we're gonna make a thousand dollars in inspection, that's not true to any extent. Um generally, permit fees run between two and a half percent to three percent of a project cost. cost. So just like surrounding, I could name, I could name half a dozen projects that were done within five hundred feet of that building. Mainly churches that had exorbitant fees in, in, if this is what you want to call it, based on the cost of work, where slate roofs were torn off, rebuilt. And the churches had filed for some type of exemption. And I believe that that previous, those previous applicants were denied when they approached the town as far as reducing or eliminating fees because they were a, a nonprofit or a religious organization. So that's my, my input on that. When it comes to whether a building is in a historic district or not, that shouldn't have any bearing because they're not all nonprofits. If they're a bona fide nonprofit and you want to pass an ordinance that exempts all nonprofits, I believe that's what the mayor and the manager are referring to, and the deputy, I'm, I'm not sure who was speaking, that it will encompass all of those and not individually because then you would have to make an application for each individual project that came up from the church to the, the next nonprofit. And then I don't know that you could come up with a fair assessment on how would, you would either approve or decline any of those that approach you.
Mr. Budo, thank you very much for that clarification because I kept saying inspection and you're right, it's the entire comprehensive process. So thank you for that additional information and perspective. I'm sorry, Sandy, was, was there some more that you wanted to say? I don't want to, yeah. Well, we do not have, well, we have a majority of the council that is not inclined to move forward with an relief or exemption at this point. So unfortunately, we are not going to be making that decision at that, at this time. Mr. Russo.
I thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, Mr. McCabe, thank you very much.
And we will send you, I will say please don't.
I would expect no less.
Okay. But thank you very much.
Absolutely. Mr. Budo, any other? Anything else from your perspective?
No, just, I would like to refer back to the twenty union that as, I, I mean, I, I believe I'm in contact through email with all of the parties. So if there's any information that could be provided on contractual items, proposals that could be reviewed, submitted, you know, prior to that March tenth date, that would be appreciated. That way I could at least acknowledge receipt, copy that back to, you know, you and your council. And if there's further input needed for that meeting, you know, I can certainly help with that as well, so.
And I believe through Mr. Russo's office, Mr. Bernstein is going to be reaching out for additional information as well.
Okay, fine.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Hey, you're welcome, anytime.
Eric, do we have to take any kind of vote on that or no?
What?
Do we have to take any kind of vote on it or no?
On wish.
On whether they wanted to waive the fees or not.
No, because in, in order to waive an ordinances, you have to pass another ordinance.
No, I just want to know the consensus of the
The answer is the governing body is not moving forward with any formal ordinance to amend the fee regarding the matter in question. There needs to be no formal vote.
Yeah, so Terry, the, since there was not an ordinance introduced to amend the ordinance, then we I want to make sure if we have to take like a Yes. Understood. Call, vote, or just whatever. But good said way because now we're going to move on to ordinances. We have a second reading and public hearing tonight, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four. This is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limit and establish a cap bank. At this time, we'll open the hearing to the public. Anybody wishing to comment on the ordinance, please come forward. Tom, is there anyone online?
No answer.
All right, seeing none, we'll close the hearing to the public. Do I have a motion to act on the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to act on the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to act on the, on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Deputy Mayor Dixon. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois? Yes, that moves us forward with our budget. All right, so no other ordinance is, at, at this time, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member, council members so request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So as we discussed earlier, we're going to remove Resolution ninety-one dash twenty-five and move that to the March tenth meeting. Outside of that, do we have any other resolutions to be discussed or removed at this time? And we also have an application, Mr. Russo, can you run down the consent agenda?
Sure. Resolution to accept proposed improvements, Clinton Street, West Nelson Division and ADA Ramsen signage. Eighty-nine is a federal aid agreement with the NJDOT. Ninety introduces the twenty twenty-five municipal and water and sewer utility budgets with the hearing March twenty-four, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. here. You should do a separate motion and vote on obviously ninety-one to pull that into March tenth, ninety-two authorizes Barbara Reynos and I to sign the updated Rossi from Suburban Consulting, ninety-three bills and vouchers and one application from John Rios for Newton Fire Department.
Okay, so we'll pull ninety-one and do that separately to move to the next meeting. Okay, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion on the consent, consent agenda with ninety-one being removed.
Second?
I will second that motion.
All right, I have a motion by Councilwoman Teets, a second by Councilwoman Diglio on the consent agenda. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Kuss?
Yes, abstaining on check number one, two, six, zero, eight.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois? Yes. All right, so do I have a, a, a motion to table and move Resolution ninety-one dash twenty twenty-five to the March tenth meeting?
Don't cable it, carry it, please.
Carry it, sorry.
Require a whole different motion
Okay.
to untable it.
All right, do I have a motion to carry then?
I'll make a motion to carry Resolution ninety-one dash twenty-five.
I will second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Dixon and a second by Councilwoman Teets to carry Resolution ninety-one dash twenty twenty-five. Good. Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois? Yes. All right, no other resolutions at this time. We'll move to the second public session. Anyone in person? Seeing none, Russo, do we have money on, anybody on Zoom? Zoom?
No reason.
All right, seeing none. We will go back to council and manager comments, Mr. Russo.
Just one item for executive, that's all.
Yes, anyone else? To P Sandy? All right, item twelve on the agenda is an executive session. This is Resolution ninety-four dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA ten, colon, four, dash, twelve under I attorney-client privilege regarding redevelopment.
That's sec, that's section seven.
Section seven. All right. So all those who are here as part of the executive session, please stay. All others, we're going to, thank you for your attendance. I want to have a motion a second to go in.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session for Resolution ninety-four dash twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dig, Diglio, Dixon, and a second by Deputy Mayor Dixon. Roll call vote, please. And the time is eight oh three. Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes.
Eric, you want to do the, no formal action will be taken?
Yes, please.
What?
No formal
So I'm shutting the Zoom down so the public needs to know that.
No formal action is anticipated to be taken. The governing body shall be meeting with its redevelopment council from the Dakota's firm as well as with the town attorney. You saying, Mr. Ferry?
Mr. Ferry.
Yes. The CFO, all members of the governing body present at the commencement of the executive session or present at the recommencement of the open session.
Okay.
And no formal action will be taken except a motion to adjourn, but we will address that at the appropriate time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bernstein, and thank you to the public and everyone who attended on Zoom.